City Council Public Hearing will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem, Kamara.
Here.
Deon.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Lee. Pelletier. Pereira.
Here.
Repouzo.
Here.
President La Libbey-Labo.
Here. Counselor Kadeem is on his way, and as members of the council know, Counselor Lee did send in his resignation this morning from the council, and effective immediately, and Counselor Pelletier's mom has passed away last night, so he will not be with us as well. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I'm going to be calling proponents and opponents to speak. When you come up, we'll have five minutes. If the council motions to waive the rules, to give an additional five minutes, so be it. But so everybody has time to speak. And if you give your name and address for the record, I do have under, we'll start with opponents. I do have two people who have signed up, and we can take more as well. The first is Robert Kamara, and the address is 127 Gagnon Street.
I'm sorry, this is citizens' input?
No, this is the public hearing.
So do we have to make a motion to open the public hearing?
We do.
Okay. I'll make the motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open the meeting, made by Counselor Vice President Deon, seconded by Counselor Pereira. All of us in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So voted.
I guess this is working, although I don't need it most of the time, as most of you well know. Okay. You know I've always got problems with the budget, but actually, this is just one rather unique thing. I never thought I would be here because I can't get a number in the budget. I am here and opposing the fact that we cannot get a number for the debt override, the exclusion. When, I think all of you seen the sample ballot, we all heard the selling of this debt override. There were, the previous mayor talked about it being, we have the video of him talking about $90, and then saying it might be between $115 and $120. And there was a whole bunch of stuff. And I sit in this chamber and watch people break down every single cubic foot of water, everything. Every bill I get is broken down, principal interest. And we got a debt that we have, and then people want to know just how much we pay. And I understand that that figure was, as all budgets are, that some of that things are just projections, but we need some kind of number. When I get my, I've been paying taxes, well, a lot of the younger guys. I know I've been paying taxes longer than Mr. Repouzo's been alive. So, and every tax bill I got, I had my tax rate, and I had the assessed value of my house. All I want is the number that we're going to pay per $100,000 on our debt exclusion, because that is an add-on. You know, we voted to override 2.5 in the parameters, but I'm still flabbergasted by the fact, how can you tell if that budget's within 2.5 when they make everything together into a stew? So the problem I have is, first of all, the excuse, it was too hard. I'm sorry. You know what's hard spending 28 hours at Notre Dame? You know what's hard being a police officer, running to a crime scene? You know what's hard being at DCM, going out in a blizzard? Being in City Hall and dealing with irate customers? That's hard. Figuring out numbers, and then saying you actually have the number, you don't want to give it out, that's just unacceptable by any city employee. That's just unacceptable. I'm sorry. That should not have ever happened. But now to get down to the facts. I believe, and I did send all you an email, I don't know if you got it yet, it's pretty extensive. My cover letter covers it. I went into some of the past indiscretions and of the city not abiding by laws, especially in the healthcare area. But I took the liberty to do a little research about what it takes, what you have as a public fiduciary. We knock that term around a lot, fiduciary. And I am a fiduciary on a retirement board, and I take the job seriously. And the fact is that there are even more strict rules for fiduciaries in the public sector. I don't know if you're aware of that, but I, according to, according to the McCullough Center for Applied Ethics and Cornell Law Legal Information Institute, and you have copies of everything I'm going to talk about. I'll give you a quick one. This is from McCullough. Government ethics refers to the unique set of duties that public officials owe to the public that they serve. These duties arise upon entering the public workforce either as an elected representative and appointed official, or a member of government staff. For simplicity's sake, please know that when we refer to public officials, we are referring to all public actors, be they elected, appointed, or hired. Public ethical obligations exist in addition to general ethical obligations, and sometimes government ethics may conflict with personal ethical duties. So, then it goes on to say the four characteristics that identify a fiduciary relationship. The fiduciary has, authority has a delegated authority to act on our behalf, which this council does, because you guys are not only our oversight committee, but you are also our fiduciary, as is the mayor, as is every employee who deals with our money.
30 seconds, Mr. Kamara.
Motion to waive the rules.
Motion for an additional three minutes.
I had said, Ms. Kamara, we were going to do five minutes, because this is in five-minute increments.
Five-minute increments? Motion for additional five minutes.
Motion to waive the rules for an additional five minutes, made by Counselor.
Okay, I'm trying to make it, this is eight, Pete, I'm not going to do it.
Kamara, excuse me, one second.
Okay.
Seconded by Counselor Kilby. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted. Continue.
Okay, we'll make this quick.
You have an additional five minutes, Mr. Kamara.
Thank you. There are at least four factors that identify a relationship as a fiduciary one. The beneficiary has delegated authority and a fiduciary, as a fiduciary, to act on our behalf, which you do. Fiduciaries have discretionary power over beneficiaries' assets or interests, which you do. Fiduciary is in a position superior to that of the beneficiary due to specialized access, knowledge, or ability, and the beneficiary trusts that the fiduciary will act in the beneficiary's best interest, which I am hoping you do. Then they have the fundamental duties, the duty of care, the duty of loyalty, the duty of impartiality, and the duty of accountability, and the duty to preserve the public's trust in government. And this is where there's some issues in the duty of care. The duty of care requires a public official to completely be faithful, execute its duties. But here's the key. The duty of care requires that directors inform themselves prior to making business decisions, and make that information reasonably available. That is Smith versus Gorham. The site is here, you can look it up, there's all kinds of legal sites here. Then the big one is that moreover, a director may simply accept the information as printed. Rather, the director must access the information with a quote "critical eye," so as to protect the interests of the stockholders, which is the city of Fall River, and its taxpayers. Also, there are a few other quotes here, but then the duty of accountability also says you have a statutory obligation to work in the best interest and give us as much information as possible. As a matter of fact, California, which I don't agree with much California does, but California does have actually a statute that mandates you have to give everybody every number they want. But then we have the duty of accountability, and of accountability. And this is where it really gets good. Without the duty of accountability, the public's ability to monitor the behavior of public fiduciaries would be severely limited. From the duty of accountability flows the duty of transparency, and the concepts of disclosure, open meetings, and accessibility of public records. In 2007, the California Supreme Court articulated the notion of public fiduciary accountability with the International Federation of Professional and Technical Engineers, and then it's got another case site, so I'll let the lawyers look at the case site. The court opined that, quote, "implicit in the democratic process is the notion that government should be accountable for its actions. In order to verify accountability, individuals must have access." All I'm asking for, I mean, I don't think this is rocket science. We're looking for a number. Everybody talked about that number. You guys actually, I think, got a sheet with the sample ballot with a whole bunch of numbers on it for projected amounts, of course. Am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know why this has become so difficult, and this is, and there's a couple of cases here that talk about a violation of the public trust, which is extremely important. And you can read this. I know, I trust you all to read this thing. The reality is that, listen, I've been paying my bills for my entire life. Every time I get a bill, I don't get a bill from MasterCard that tells me I owe $700 billion, because that's how much credit card debt they own. I get my credit card bill. I know what I pay. I know how much money I pay. I know what the interest, I know the principal, I know what I charge. I get my water bill, I look at the cubic feet. I get my normal taxes, I get my tax rate. All I'm saying is, I believe that this is a violation of the law, and a fiduciary responsibility that the city has to just give us a number. I don't think it's that difficult. Everybody had a number when they were promoting this override. Now it's like, what's wrong with the number? And I understand if the number's not the same. And I understand if they're going to stick other things in, and that's a debate for another time, if they can use that money. But the reality is, all I want to know is, this is what they did. If they want to supplement that with Opera money, that's for another day. But all I want to know is how much this debt exclusion is going to cost us. That simple.
20 seconds, Mr. Kamara.
Oh, that, okay. And all I'll say, I'll say one thing before I say, all I'm asking you to do is do the right thing. I always leave you the quote, that's not a quote, it's a movie title by Spike Lee. Just do the right thing.
Counselor in seat three, Counselor Vice President Deon.
Yeah, I just want to make one comment.
It's a public hearing. I don't think there should be an engagement.
It's not, usually, in public hearings. Well, you've allowed it in the past, we've allotted it at citizens' input.
I don't think there should be a back and forth during a public hearing.
I'll allow it. Counselor Vice President?
I was only going to make a comment, the comment being that we will be having these conversations, and I agree. I, as a counselor and a taxpayer, you as a counselor and a taxpayer, and every taxpayer in the city is entitled to know what that dollar amount is. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kamara.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
The next opponent to speak is Nelson Vasquez. The address is 210 Sunset Hill. And you'll have five minutes, Mr. Vasquez.
With taxes going up, with this mayor's inability to raise wasteful spending beyond the levels we have seen with this budget that's expiring, that violated the city's salary ordinances with those raises, it's just going to continue the same thing with this wasteful spending. It's time to cut out the fat. It's time to put the city back on a more financially sustainable path, because the path we are on is not sustainable. Sooner or later, Groundhog Day is going to come into this room, because for the next, I think, four or five years, we have structural deficits for subsequent years. The former CFO sat at this table and said that. So, in regards to Durfee, I find it appalling that we have a mayor who feels he doesn't have to answer to anybody. But the law is, the state constitution says that all public officials are answerable to the people at all times. So if people want the number, you have to give it to them. This ain't a dictatorship, this is a democracy. And the good thing about democracy is that when people are not getting those answers, democracy gives them the tools to get those answers, whether he likes it or not. And quite frankly, he's down here today, and I hope he brought that number down, but he must have forgot about it. It's probably still on his desk. It is quite disrespectful to the citizenry that to have all lying items, all of them, but only one is not there. The city council, it's a disrespect to the city council, because you need to do your job to provide oversight, to make sure the number is correct, and to deliberate to make sure that it is correct. Because, quite frankly, the more and more this is pushed to the side, it's just that he wants more and more wasteful spending and more pay raises. There is no reason to hide this from the people. I'm getting calls, many people are getting calls, they're demanding answers, and they're not getting it. I don't understand what's the holdup. Just tell the people, he was the grand architect for this thing. He went to every single neighborhood association meeting, advocating for this project. I just, it makes no sense to me. It's time that he just be real with the people, be real with himself, and just show the number. It's a disrespect to this city, to the property owners. I don't care who you are. If you get a mortgage, and your bank doesn't want to tell you for 30 years what your payment is, but you're going to pay, you wouldn't be satisfied with that. Nobody will. So, again, now that he's here, I'll say it again. If he continues to stall, and the city council does not want to do what they have to do, we, the people, will do what we have to do to get that number. It's beyond disrespectful at this point. So again, Paul, it's on you. Do your job, like the Patriots say. They have a motto, "Do your job." It's time. We're all waiting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Madam Clerk, do we have submitted opponents?
Yes, we have one.
Good afternoon, members of the Fall River City Council. My comments are made regarding the proposed FY '23 budget. In total, I think this is a budget where the mayor disregarded any sympathy or any support for the taxpayers. If you hate Fall River, this is the kind of budget you present to the residents of this city. A few questions I have in the Law Department are this. One, when are we going to rein in outside legal services? We are raising outside legal services to over $367,000, and with in-house legal services being over $415,000. It is time we have the conversation with the Law Department and find ways we can save taxpayer money. Also, there are two vacant Assistant Corporation Council positions with a $50,000 salary. However, I recently saw three other Assistant Corporation Councils' names on recent letterhead I received from Attorney Hawiak in regards to the denied John Perry report. To the public at home, keep in mind two things. Mayor Coogan is raising your property taxes and your rates. At the same time, Mayor Coogan is raising salaries for multiple departments, his friends. The fact that the mayor is once again going to plug ARPA funds in the budget designed to give taxpayers a quote-unquote "break" is a political gimmick. He is raising normal property taxes, 2.5%, the maximum. He supports raises to the water rates, the sewer rates, and now he is going to use one-time monies to pay for some of the costs of the debt exclusion, apparently. Why doesn't the mayor look for other cuts in the budget, like the Law Department, or no more pay increases to his friends? The mayor is not really doing a service to anyone using one-time monies in the budget. Mayor Coogan says he's giving the taxpayers a break. Where is the break? The taxpayers are paying the most they have paid in years, if not ever. That's not a tax break. He's lowering the debt exclusion, apparently, but he's raising property taxes 2.5%. That is a gimmick, a political facade, and in my opinion, he's doing it for political purposes. See you on the campaign trail real soon, Mr. Mayor. Call in, 560 Ray Street. That's all we have, Madam President.
Thank you. Are there any proponents wishing to speak? Any proponents?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Clerk, did we have any proponents submitted?
We did not.
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing, made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Kamara. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So voted?
Aye.
A few minutes before Committee on Finance. Counselor Committee on Finance will now come to order. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem.
Here.
Kamara.
Here.
Deon.
Here.
Kilby.
Here.
Pelletier.
Here.
Here.
Repouzo.
Here.
And President La Libbey-Labo.
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item on the agenda is citizens' input. First person to speak is John Vello, 1215 Dwelly Street, and the subject is car wash. When you're ready, I'll have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is John Vello. I live on 1215 Dwelly Street. I've been living there for over 30 years. And this car wash is driving me crazy. It's been a non-going situation from day one. Years ago, there was respect. There's no respect no more, you know? That's what changed it. Because I lived there, I used to, I live right on the side of it now, and I go to work, I work at night. Sometimes I'm trying to get some sleep, I can't. It's a night, day, whatever, whatever they feel, because it's gone off. So they can go there, use the vacuums anytime. There's one vacuum, it's quite close to the house where the lady last week complained, and it's, I don't know how they, years ago, I guess they gave up permits for anybody. I don't know how this car wash is the only thing that doesn't have a license to operate. Why is car washes don't have a license to operate? I don't get it. We all have license for everything. So I don't get how car washes, they're on their own. This one's like a 24-hour. If somebody goes up there with coins, they can operate any machine in there, at 2 o'clock, 1 o'clock, you know? And then the music today, it's not no John Travolta music. It's F this and F this, you know what I mean? It's all swearing. It's constantly crazy. And sometimes I'm cutting my lawn, I see needles on the yard. I recall the guy that cleans it, he seen it last year. I keep complaining. It's always complaining, I'm never getting nowhere. When am I going to get somewhere? I'm a citizen. I've been paying taxes for how many years? I own the house, I was 26 years old. I've been living for a river all my life, since 1974. Enough is enough. I can a car wash control an apartment home, as a citizen. I know they pay taxes. I pay taxes. I own two houses, two houses on the same thing. I used to own another one on Laurel. I just sold it not too long ago. If my wife gave me the authorization of selling, I would sell out. I'm already done, you know? I love the city. I always lived in the city. This is my city. It's like they say, we built this city. And, you know, it's gone. You know, the cleanest, everything of the city's gone. You know, it's the new generation. I'm sorry to talk about the new generation, but it's the new generation, you know? I got the bad news in my yard. If you go by my yard, you see how clean it is. You will see it. You go right now, any of yous. I take care of my property. I clean my sidewalk. I clean the water from the, when the drain gets flooded. I do all that. The city sees me out there. The guys see me, they do that. I do that. You know? So I take care of my property. But this car wash is driving me nuts. I'm right up there here with that car wash. And it seems like, I talked to somebody, they do their best, but they got somebody else in the outside. I already talked to O'Neil upstairs. Mrs. Pereira's been helping me a little bit on the side. But how much can she do? She left too, and then she came back, then everything just goes, you know, circle again. It's a circle. It always comes back. I got the bad news. I'm the bad guy.
20 seconds.
Like I said, thank you, and I hope if you're finding in your way, at least change the hours of the place, or something. Something's got to be changed. That's all I ask from the city. You know, I'm not asking to waste money, I just ask you to help me out. That's all I ask. I appreciate it. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you.
Madam President, I just missed the street name. What was the street name?
Dwelly Street.
Dwelly. It's the same car wash as the woman from last meeting. Next person signed up to speak is CJ Ferry, 300 Buffington Street, and the subject is taxation.
Who knows?
When you're ready, three minutes.
Madam President, city, members of the city council, I'm calling because I took a quick look at this budget, and you're going to be reviewing it for the next couple of weeks. And I can't see anywhere where we identify where ARPA funds may be used, or have been used, to meet budgetary needs. I asked that question because we've talked about structural deficits for the past couple of years, and the Councilman C. One always mentions the structural deficits, and he's been very clear And he's been very clear on them, and you can identify them the way he describes them, which is very appropriate to the people of Fall River. But when we're looking over the budget, I mean, I went through the budget and I found one page where there was a link on it, and I clicked the link and it went nowhere. It absolutely went nowhere. It was dead, it was a dead link. So how can I look at that information if it goes to a dead link? How could you look at that information if it goes to a dead link? If you even bother to use it? This is where we have to come out and look at this budget very closely. And my personal opinion is, the City Council should take the entire budget, drop it down to a dollar so you meet the time clock on the forty-five days, and then have each department be moved up from that point. There's nothing wrong with that, and you could look at it and say, "This is the way it is." There is no such thing as zero-based budgeting, not in city budget. Okay, because you have contracts, you have pay raises, you have health care costs, you have insurance costs, they're all there, so there's no such thing as zero-based budgeting. So I don't want to hear any department head say, "This is zero-based budgeting," because it's not. Because as long as they have a salary, there's not zero-based budgeting. That's the salary. It's time for us to take control of our city, it's time to take control of our budget. I mean, I look at it and I see in the ARPA spending, twenty, you know, two million nine hundred thousand dollars for people that are being rehired. How are we gonna continue to pay for those positions in a year or two, when that money's gone? That's where we have a structural deficit being occur. We have to be on top of this. And I would expect, and I would hope, that every city council will review that budget very closely when every department head comes before you, and every single person comes before you to talk about it, so that we know, as citizens, that that budget is appropriate, and that the taxation is correct, and that no excess money is spent or budgeted. I'm tired of seeing five positions go unfilled, but we keep the money in the budget. If they're not filled, remove them from the budget. Let's get the budget down to zero-based budgeting. Let's get down to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any submitted?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Madam President and members of the City Council. I want to make a disclosure, although it does go against advice I received. It's extremely important. The community know this information. The mayor has sent me a cease and desist letter regarding my comments at the last City Council meeting. I believe the mayor did this in an effort to silence me and to thwart a recall campaign against him. I'm ashamed the mayor would engage in political retaliation. I think this shows the community what the mayor thinks about difference of opinion and political discourse. The mayor has failed to silence me. I have the right to have my opinion on issues. With this budget, the mayor is misleading the community. Paraphrasing, he has said numerous times in the past that the city is in the best fiscal shape it's ever been in. Mr. Mayor, you are a liar. The five-year fiscal forecast is a forecast of deficits. You support raises to the water rates, the sewer rates, and property taxes raised two and a half percent. If the city's in the best fiscal shape it's ever been in, why are you looking for a bailout from the school department? In all seriousness, this mayor has gone too far. I can't believe people still support him. He doesn't care about Fall River. I think the power is getting to his head. I think he's lost his mind. He's becoming more sinister, and this is a dangerous precedent, having the mayor try and silence people's rights to freedom of speech. All this time, I would like to call the mayor to resign. At this time, I would like to call the mayor to resign. Lastly, please note the mayor will face recall proceedings next week. We will remove him from office in the next few months. Thank you very much for your time, respectfully submitted Colin Dias.
Anything further, Madam Clerk?
No, nothing further.
Would you be sure to check the link on the website for the city budget and make sure that it's working? I know you sent it to us last week. We have hard copy.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is the School Department presentation and discussion of the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. Members of the School Department would like to come to the table, and if you all wouldn't mind just giving your name and position for those watching at home. Thank you. When you get there. Counselor in Seat Four, Counsel Kilby?
No, I'm just gonna ask questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel Kilby, did you want to speak before they made their presentation?
I'll speak after, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Ponce, and I'm the Superintendent of Schools.
Hi, my name's Kevin Almeida, I'm the Chief Financial Officer.
Ken Pacheco, the Chief Operating Officer.
So, good evening, thank you for having us. In April, we all came before you and presented our extensive budget. Tonight, we are before you again, and we are hoping that we, we're here as a department. We're going to highlight some of our budget investments, and we are here to answer any questions that you have. I will hand it over to Kevin in a minute, but just wanted to say that I want you to keep in mind that our budget was an intentional, thoughtful budget that is focused on direct services to students, supporting services in the classroom. Our investments are in really shoring up our infrastructure, supporting teachers in the classroom, paraprofessional support, social-emotional support, and some infrastructure investments to make us a more efficient district. So, really, this budget is helping to set us up for success. I'm gonna hand it over to Kevin, who's gonna go through some logistical information, and then we'll open it up.
Thank you, thank you for having me. So, this budget in front of you for FY twenty-three, the state aid, the chapter seventy, as they refer, is one hundred and sixty-eight point four million. That number represents a twenty-three point two million dollar increase from FY twenty-two. The required local contribution is thirty-six point three million. It represents an increase of two million dollars. FY twenty-two, it was thirty-four point two million. The net school spending budget for this year for FY twenty-three is two hundred and four million, seven fifty-three, two ninety. That represents a twenty-five million dollar increase, or a fourteen percent increase from last year. The FY twenty-two net school spending budget was one hundred and seventy-nine point five million. This budget in front of you includes the part of the Student Opportunity Act. The Student Opportunity Act will increase over the next several years through FY twenty-seven. This year represents two-sixths of the student opportunity increase. New positions in this budget and investments that we've made. There are one hundred and seventy-four positions. In particular, there are sixty-six paraprofessionals, fifty-one teaching positions, twelve safety officers, eight tech staff, and various other positions. Of those positions, one hundred and sixty-five positions are being funded through the operating budget, and nine positions are being funded through the ESR grant. The budget in front of you has transportation budgeted for eleven million dollars in FY twenty-three. In addition to that, I just wanted to point out some of the investments that the School Department has done over the last several years. In particular, over the last two years. We have funded Durfee, the Fieldhouse facade, for one point one million dollars. We funded the Talbot School, the drainage and the parking lot, for just over a million dollars. We funded the Pace Building for our new electrical service there for five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Also at the Pace Building, a Triller relocation and pump installation for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. At the Henry Lord, we did the construction of the Egress Road for four hundred and eight thousand dollars. For Durfee, we purchased cafeteria equipment for two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And finally, and most recently, the School Committee at the May Meeting voted to approve the two point three million dollars that the City Council provided to us from the mayor to meet our net school spending obligation, for which we're gonna use towards the athletic fields. All those items listed together that I just mentioned to you totaled six million, one hundred and one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. In addition to all those investments that I just mentioned, we've allocated seventeen million dollars in the ESR, in our ESR funding that's gonna go towards HVAC work and new windows at Henry Lord. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Counselor in Seat Four, Counsel Kilby?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just, I've got really five questions here. First is school security. Counsel Carrera and I talked about this today. And not to be reactive, but it's a serious issue, and I'm glad to see that this handout that we received tonight has an increase of twelve. So are those police officers, or is it private security?
That's security. We have seven SROs.
Private security?
Right now, seven SROs that are Fall River Police Department, and we have private, well, our own security officers. So we're adding twelve additional security officers to the officers that we already have.
And what's the training for the non-Fall River Police Department officers?
So they do receive Sheriff's Department training. They work closely up with Fall River PD. There is...
So it's a governmental entity from Sheriff Hartson that's supplying the security?
No, no, no. The security are Fall River Public School employees. So they are our employees, right, yes. We're adding eight to Durfee High School, and four will be spread out across the district.
Okay, that was my next question to Durfee and the elementary schools.
So the elementary schools...
In large measure, we built wonderful schools, and I'm so proud of the last fifteen, twenty years, all that we've done. So, for instance, I believe the, I might be wrong, the Sylvia School, I think, has one. The Green School has one, and it's almost over seven hundred students there. So what's the plan for the elementary?
So the elementary schools are in a different situation than the high school for a couple of reasons. Number one is that the elementary schools are locked down all the time, as opposed to the high school, where we do have visitors in and out of that building. They'll all go through security checkpoints. However, the sheer size and square footage, all of the other schools combined do not equal the square footage of Durfee, the elementary schools. So the square footage at Durfee requires more offices, more activity.
Durfee has a lot of internal security as well.
We do, so that internal, yeah, and then the cameras, the other devices that have been installed. Durfee's building right now is, has a lot of new technology working with it. The other schools, we've had camera updates.
Point of order.
Counselor in Seat Two?
I'm sorry, I respectfully think that maybe we should have this conversation in private. I don't think we should be divulging to the public in terms of how many people are securing these facilities at any point in time. The counselor has every right to get answers he wants, and I think we should sit down with people that are in place of doing this. The police chief. So, yeah, I just don't want to get into how many people are in each building, or how many, because we all understand the severity of what's going on, and we understand that we all want to do the same thing and protect its children as much as possible. I don't think we should be getting to a pinpoint of defining and telling everyone what we have and don't have in place right now. And I hope everyone just comes to understand that, these questions are very important to have, these conversations are very important to have, and I just don't think we should be doing in the public for that. Who knows who's listening, it might trigger some opportunity, might think that, you know what? One person, twenty people in the building, I can... So I just don't want to get any deeper that, but I honestly think that I'm not comfortable with this conversation going security in public like this. And if anyone wants to know what the security measures are, I'll let the officials, we should probably contact the appropriate people and find out what's going on, and not air it into public.
Point of order is taken. I trust that Mr. Pacheco wouldn't divulge anything that he felt wasn't...
Well taken, no one asked any questions along those lines. But I think it's important for parents who are watching this to...
I agree, a hundred percent.
Feel that, you know, that it's, our schools are a safe environment, which they are.
Yes.
There's no...
I think that's a point that we need to make, thank you.
So, the other issue is the Council filed a resolution. There was a committee member that came down here before us and alluded that, I think you touched on it, Mr. Almeida, alluded that the fields, the campus, I like to call it instead of fields, because it's actually finishing off a campus, is not gonna be funded, so if we can talk about that for a minute.
Sure. So currently, we have funding in place to do the baseball field, which is two point four million from borrowed funds from the Council did quite some time ago.
We bonded that, we voted already.
Right, right. So just to show you how volatile the market is, I came down here for one point eight, which was the opinion at the time, that that was going to be the price tag on that particular field. The Council added six hundred thousand to that to bring it to two point four.
And that was Counsel Kadeem for the lights.
Yes. And so now we're sitting at a project that's probably gonna be two point eight. It's going out to bid probably in the next three weeks. So that project is kind of a barometer as to what we're expecting. So the rest of the estimates that we have are extremely conservative. Softball field at one point eight million. So this softball field is, as I, when I did come down, we were talking about the field, it's part of the project. So it's up on a tier where the old building was, and that has gone from a softball field, soccer field, softball field, to a softball field. The soccer field is gonna be used on the other practice field. So it's gonna be strictly a softball field, and it's also gonna have some field events for the track and field program. So that field is one point eight million dollars, of which some of those funds are coming out of the project. So the base of the project is being done, retaining walls, underground electrical. But the project itself will be a total of one point eight million. And the last item is a new carpet, a new playing field on the practice field, the practice football field, which is the second field, or we call it turf B. So that's six hundred and fifty thousand, for a total of five million, two hundred and fifty thousand for Phase One. This work is going out to bid now, and some of this work will start immediately, which is the baseball field. The softball field will start in late September, and the practice field will be done in March, when we're finished with it this fall. It'll be slated to be done in March, and that's strictly just the carpet.
So the timeline is still for next spring?
So next spring, next, next spring, we're gonna start working on the practice field. But the softball field and the baseball field will pretty much be completed by then. Phase Two, which is the other fields that we have, so the football field turf needs to be replaced also, they're both the same age, so that's seven hundred and fifty thousand. Field Five, which is the current JV softball field, that field will become JV softball and JV baseball. That field is one point five million. That will be a grass field, a turf, but not artificial turf. And again, it gives us some options for track and field. So some, the javelin, the discus, the shot put, there are different areas that we can use for those events, and this will be one of them we can use in the outfield of that particular field, which is why we're going with a turf, with a natural grass field. And then the Talbot baseball field is a million dollars, so it's two baseball fields that we're building at Talbot. So we have them also for the high school to use, which will give us three fields of each in close proximity to the high school. But it'll also allow the middle school sports to take place. We currently have a very robust middle school baseball league going on right now, and this will give us the capacity to do more at the middle school level, and also the high school will be able to use it. And the final, well, that's a million dollars. So one point five for the softball field, seven fifty for the football turf, a million dollars for the Talbot baseball field, and the last item in that group is the track at the, in the football stadium. The track needs to be replaced, the rubberized track. Press box to be extended so that the soccer field will have a press box, just like the football field. So it's just an extension of that press box. The stadium needs a new scoreboard, and that total is one point four. So the Phase Two is four point six five.
That's good to hear. Mr. Pacheco? Just three other questions really fast here. Maybe this is for Ms. Ponce, teacher-staff, teacher-student ratios. Elementary school, I know, was an issue.
Right.
And the demographics change, obviously, right?
Right.
You can speak to that, please?
Right, our cap is twenty-seven. I think that's what we aim for. I would say we're probably, a realistic ratio is probably twenty-five to one average. That's what we aim for. I would say we probably, a realistic ratio is probably twenty five to one average. Some classes lower and some are slightly higher. But elementary grades are the ones that we fill.
And I'm glad to see that we're hiring a pair of professionals, a lot of pair of professionals. Because it's the biggest bank in the book.
We're looking to hire, but absolutely. I think every kindergarten, first grade, it's too many kids for one person.
Thank you. And finally, how's the absenteeism with? I won't call it post-COVID. We're still going through it. So student, not teacher.
Well, I will say that the numbers have improved. We're hovering around eighty nine, ninety percent post-COVID. For staff, also around ninety two, ninety one percent average, weekly average. I, I think that after the holidays, you saw a little bit of a dip and then coming back up, but, you know.
Something we're dealing with big time, right? I think I talked to Council Dan before the meeting and I, maybe a lot of parents are cautious still, you know.
Right, right.
And I'm sorry, one more. Health insurance, is it still a budget buster for you, Mr. Almeida?
It's been pretty, I hate to say sustainable. It's been pretty, it's been about the same the last couple of years. And I think it's just due to the fact that we've, we do have a lot of open positions currently.
Younger staff maybe too.
Yeah, that as well.
All right. I won't, this is kind of in my wheelhouse, like Mr. Reposo. I was a former educator as well, as Linda was, I think. So I'll leave it there. If any other questions, I'll, I'll reach out to you guys. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat seven, Council Pereira.
Just a couple of questions that I have. What's going on with the preschool classes and starting them?
Well, we actually have a plan for, to expand. We have an RFP that's out there for rental and an RFP for purchase. We're hoping that we're going to get started on the rental piece where we'll be able to expand some classes. I think that we'll be able to hopefully add five more classes for next year and then go from there. But there is a plan to expand pre-Ks.
Are we going to be able to use the Wiley School that we still own and is basically just for storage? Is that not adequate or appropriate for that age group?
Well, the stairs are an issue at the Wiley and the Wiley is still in the pipeline at MSBA. So we're hoping that when we do, when we do either get that or not, we'll have to make a decision. The, the plan, as far as the district goes, would be to use that as an annex to the Stone School. Because the, the population in the lower grades are really high. So this would give us more, you know, more space for that age group. Pre-K is just, it's tough on stairs with the pre-K and we'd like to keep them on, on a single level wherever we can.
Thank you. How are you doing with school adjustment councils? I know that there was some concern during a meeting that I watched. Getting people who could identify with the student body, getting individuals who spoke different languages. How have you, you know, how's that been working out? Have we reached out to the colleges that have graduated or? I know Bridgewater just had a number of people graduate with their MSW.
Right. We, we actually do take some interns in from them also. We have hired additional school adjustment counselors. All of our middle schools, we hired a fourth school adjustment counselor for them. We have one per grade level and an additional one. We also have, we hired additional school adjustment counselors for the larger elementary schools as well as the high schools. So I agree with you. It's a challenge to find bilingual, trilingual people. We grab them when we can, but we are actively recruiting, not only for counseling, but we do need to reflect the population that we serve.
Mrs. Ponce, is our pay scale adequate to other communities in the area? For adjustment counselors or teachers, like what's the retention been like and are we not getting people because of the pay? Because in the city side, I'm hearing that. People get paid more, they leave and I don't blame them.
That, that does happen. I'm not going to stand here and sit here and lie to you. We do lose people to neighboring communities that pay higher wages. We, however, I, we have made big strides in becoming more competitive with our neighboring communities. The last two unions that we've agreed with are educate, educators as well as the administrators. We have become much more comparable to our neighboring communities. But, you know, I, I think that, I'd like to think that people don't go to, you know, I think we're looking for people that have that fire in the belly and that really want to serve their community and make a difference. However, people do, we have to be realistic that people do need to make a living wage. So we're doing everything we can. We, we actually are recognizing, we researched our neighboring communities and trying to keep up with our, our communities, with our bargaining units.
What's the teacher retention like now? Is it better than it was in the past?
I, I, I think that it's, it's gotten a lot better. I, I would like to, I want to see what the numbers are post-COVID. I think this has been an incredibly challenging year and I, I think that it'll be interesting to see what the retention rate will be after this year. But in comparison to past years, we have improved our retention rate. And I, I think that we continue to work at creating environments where people want to work at, right?
And I like the civic engagement classes that they have, you know, in all of the different schools. I think that that's really helped. Gotten kids more involved. I've enjoyed speaking at several different schools when they've called me to. And one of the things that really got to me was usually when I'd speak in front of groups of, of children, especially in middle schools. They were concerned with guns, gangs, violence. Today, they're concerned with mental health. Why does it take a long time to get a counselor? And that was pretty much, the majority of the questions were all about mental health. And the other percentage was about bullying and how do you stop bullying? Are we doing anything to address those? And I know it, it's, it's a community issue. It's not a school department issue. It's a community issue. But I'm just wondering what the schools have done to try to look at the bullying and, and I know social media, it's just bizarre. But are there any plans for that or?
Well, we have our lead school adjustment counselor, Claudia Costa, works very closely with our school adjustment counselors and building base people to support our students. Social, emotional needs as well as the bullying piece. There's a lot of training that they attend. We also are doing classes with students. It's a real issue. You're absolutely right. And it, it's not a, just a school issue. It's not just a home issue. And it's not just a community issue. It really is a three-pronged issue that we all need to work together to support our students. I mean, mental health, if you look at all the, all the clinics and all of the support services in the community, everybody is over, you know, they're, they're maxed out. You are right. There's a long waitlist. When we recommend a student for services, they are months in waiting for those immediate services. We are seeing, we have seen many more crisis calls to our schools than we have in the past. It's, that's the reality of the world we live in. We have to make sure we do some work within our schools as well as within our community to expand those services.
Is there maybe something that we can put together? I know, I hate to say the word task force, but is there some type of a group that we can put together with mental health providers? The city has a great, you know, non-violence program going on and, and other community players along with the school department. I certainly would be willing to help with something like that because it's, it's getting out of control.
Absolutely.
And I have worked with Claudia. She is fantastic. So I applaud you for having hired her because she really does a phenomenal job and.
We actually, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we actually do have a youth empowerment task force that we, it, it, they had started prior to COVID. It, it stopped for a while and we resurrected, resurrected it and have community people at the table. Counselors, the community agencies, the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, the, you know.
Right.
So we do have, that we are starting back up and that it's to support students' needs.
I think it's difficult for students to go into the principal's office or go to a guidance council when people see them going into those offices and wonder. But we did have a meeting, a committee that I chair, or Andrew chairs, Committee Andrew chairs on Health and Human Services and Elder FBS. I put that committee on the council because I thought there was a need for it and I'm glad to see Andrew really working it. But, you know, we had a group in front of us, Christian McCloskey, Michaela Gagny. And all they wanted to do was put signs with one of those QR codes at the different parks or maybe get a billboard so that kids could take a picture of that and there's a bunch of services, a lot of numbers, numbers that kids could call when they're in crisis, when, you know, they want to look for a particular service. And I did tell the mayor that I thought that oppo money would be good to use to put these signs up for right now. So I, I hope that that goes forward. We will certainly discuss that at the next meeting, I'm sure. Mr. Reposo, am I sure?
You are very strong.
I am sure. And, and I think that, you know, that every little bit counts. But thank you. I have heard really good things about the school department under your direction, Mrs. Ponce. I, I thank you. I know it's not easy.
It's a team.
You're here.
But thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Reposo.
All right. A few questions I have for you. First and foremost, when I look through the budget of each individual school, all the numbers are the same. So excuse my ignorance in being the new guy here, but why is that like that in the budget book?
So we follow the same logic, same budget that we've done for the last several years. And what that, what that dollar amount represents is an average for that position. And so each school is set up that way. But when you look in the front in your, in the detailed budget summary, everybody's listed there, actual salaries, everything, everything is there for you to look at.
Got it. Thanks. So the pairs, as I go through each school, I notice that some are classified, it's kind of a two-pronged question. So some schools are classified as, and I want to misquote here, requiring assistance or intervention, others are not. So along those lines, are the pairs being prioritized to those schools that need additional intervention? I think this question probably is to Maria more than anything else.
I, I think that we have different types of pairs and so we have some sub-separate classrooms where it's an automatic, they, they would have two pairs in each room. We also have some students who have one-to-one pairs. So they, that's a compliance issue. They have to have somebody assigned to them. And then we have some pair of professionals that are classroom support pairs, right? Interven, they might provide intervention support. They, they will push into classrooms in, in the building. So it depends on the building population and the, the, the way the building is structured. So if you have a school like Spencer Borden who has a very high special needs population because they have some sub-separate classrooms, you're going to see more pairs in that school than you would at a Tansy, for instance.
Okay. It's, and along with Counselor Kilby's question about attendance post-COVID and kind of during COVID still, I noticed within the new hires, there is no mention of any sort of attendance officers or what have you. Do you feel that what you currently have is enough to handle? Because as I look through each school, clearly there's an issue with, with absenteeism. So is there an increase in that? Can there be an increase of that? Would it be beneficial? Your thoughts?
I, I feel like we have right now enough attendance officers. The attendance officers are what we would call a tier three support, right? So the attendance belongs to everybody in the building. So what we have at each building is a student support team where, you know, as a principal, I would have my school adjustment counselors, my guidance counselors, my administrators, my attendance officer, we would all be at the table and we look at the students that are on the cusp of becoming truant, right? The students that are already truant. And we would assign. We all were charged with, okay, I always had like a caseload. So let's say I have fifteen kids. I'm going to be the one to check in on those kids, to make those phone calls, et cetera. So I, I think that the attendance officers, they are working with the school-based teams to support them and they're doing that tier three intervention to support. We have eight right now. Right now, I don't see a need to add them. If we do, I, the school committee's been very supportive as far as, as long as we can justify a need. So I don't have a problem asking for support if we feel that there's a need. But I think right now, I, I think that the attendance, you're right, our data shows that we have an attendance issue. I think that it needs to be broader, addressed more broadly than just handing it over to the attendance officers because the rate is too high just to have one person at each building take it on.
And, and how are those individuals, they just kind of work as they need to? So if, if, let's say Spencer Borden has child X that needs to be visited, of those eight, they're assigned?
Oh, they're all assigned to schools. So they're all assigned to schools and they, some of them may do two days in one school, three days in another school, et cetera. So, or mornings in one school, afternoons in the other, depending on the start and end times. But they're all assigned to schools and they have their caseloads.
Okay. In, in the Essar money that's being spent, termed community facilitator, can you explain a little bit what that role and responsibility is looking to accomplish?
Yep. So we want to have a community facilitator in every building. That person, hopefully, we're going to find bilingual people that are going to be housed at each school and they will be the conduit between school and home. They need to do a lot of work with families, creating, bringing families in, working with families to support students. Some parents may not come to school because nobody there speaks Spanish or Portuguese or whatever, right? And, and, or they don't understand the forms that were sent home. We want community facilitators to not only be that link between school and home, but also create support systems. Workshops, support parents in, in that work. So I, I think that that's important work that we say about, we, we say we have a low parent engagement, but we haven't really created a structure to support parents and to invite parents into our buildings and welcome them in. And I think that this is the beginning. One person's not going to answer, you know, and, and fix everything. But I think we have to make a concerted effort to make our schools accessible to parents.
Yeah. It reminds me of when I was in public school myself, parent liaisons. That they essentially were the, were the bridge between the parents and the school to, you know, get more communication out, get them in the building, get them to be more engaged. And maybe sometimes you just don't understand the processes to, hey, come on in and be a part of this program. So it's kind of similar in what you're trying to accomplish?
It's very similar to that, absolutely.
And obviously because it's the Essar money, it's not going to be forever. So long-term planning, how are you rating its success? To then hopefully, if it's successful, you're going to invest it later.
Right. I think that what we would have to do is we would have to have some measures in place for each school to gauge the success, you know, through attendance at, at functions, to survey parents to see if they, if they were, if it was easier to access the school. So we have to build in a measure of, to, to gauge that success.
Okay. And how long, how long essentially, is that a one-year test run with the Essar money or does it, Kevin, I don't know, does it run two years?
So we, we have Essar until September of two thousand and twenty-four.
Yeah.
So it's Essar one in September thirtieth coming up, Essar two the following September and Essar three, the September after that.
And this is all Essar, all bunched in or?
So, this is going to be Essar two because we're going to go, we're, we're going to spend down Essar two next year. And Essar, we're, we're in the beginning of stages of spending Essar three as well because it's a lot more money. But it's a tiered approach to spend all the money down.
Excellent. We talk about the pre-Ks. I know you were talking about rental space, what have you. Are they being prioritized in particular parts of the city, particular populations where maybe it's heavier or there's a bigger need?
Yeah. Ms. Farias is the one who, she has been spearheading that outreach work. So she facilitates all of our early childhood, our early childhood program. She's already reached, does some, done some outreach work. We already have students in the queue. Our hope is that we're going to be able to service all the students that are, that are, because in the city, we also have some students who attend private daycare, et cetera. But right now, we are doing some outreach to parents throughout. She, she, they have different community events where they are targeting and recruiting and hopefully we're going to be able to fill all those spots and then some.
And is there a general idea of where those are going to be located yet?
Well, we have an RFP out right now. Hopefully, we're going to be making a decision this week in regards to that and we'll be able to put forth a proposal with dedicated. We have looked at some spots and hopefully we're going to be able to commit to something this week.
And within, and within those pre-K programs, how many students are you looking to house in a particular program?
Each class has a max of twelve to fifteen students, depending on if, if you have some students that are required, have some disabilities. So that ratio might come down to twelve, but it's twelve to fifteen students per class.
And in, in those expansions of pre-K, are those teachers and pairs included in this operating budget number that you're planning for?
Nope. That's going to come out. We have. We have set aside seven million, a little over $7 million from our ESR funds to support our expansion.
Okay. Last question goes back to the job fair that just happened recently. Was it successful? And are there plans to continue doing things like that?
I'll be honest, I don't think it was successful. I think that we recruit, we attracted some people, but not enough. I think we've thought about it and reflected on it. I'm not sure if it was the, it was the first really hot weekend. But everybody is going after the same pot. Everybody's suffering a shortage of staff and is recruiting. So we actually are doing, we're going to be doing, exploring some, a virtual one also. But in advertising, we have to do a better job with marketing ourselves as a district. But we didn't recruit as, as many candidates as we had hoped for. So I'll be honest.
Can I ask, who, who deals with the marketing of the district itself? Like, is there a person within the school department that does that? Or is it left to the individual schools? I mean, listen, I can speak from experience myself, I do a lot of it myself.
Yep.
So is it, does it come down to the individual school to say, hey, come work for us?
Well, I think that, and that happens in many cases. We actually had this conversation today, and I said that we probably need to look at that as a possibility. Right now, our HR department and some of our staff did some of the, our tech people did some of the brochures, et cetera. But it's left up to us. We don't have a dedicated marketing firm that we deal with that puts the word out there. And I, I think that we probably need to invest in something of that sort.
Okay. Last question just goes back to some of the accountability for each individual school. How do, how do we get to that classification? I'm just, for my own curiosity here. How do we determine, is this based on the state scores? Or is this an internal label? How do, how do we get to that?
Which label are you looking at? The schools that are under the 10th percentile?
Well, just in general, so on every cover page of every school, it says accountability profile, and then the overall classification, and then the reason for it. So I'm just curious, is that, I know from my own experience, like leveled schools, level two, three, four, what have you, is that what this is talking about?
Yes. That's a Department of Elementary and Secondary designation.
Okay. And at this point, I'm looking at some of them that say require assistance. Are there any particular schools that we're concerned about that we need to have more attention on than others that should be reflected upon when we're looking at expanding the operating budget?
Well, we have invested heavily in those schools. We have two level four schools, the Watson School and Fonska School are level fours and hopefully on the cusp of coming out of it. There, nobody is coming out this year again because of COVID, but we're hoping that in the future, they'll be able to come out. We also have other schools that are under the 10th percentile, the Green School, we have Morton. So we have a couple of schools that just missed Henry Lord, they just missed it, they're on the ninth percentile, they, we thought they were going to be over it. But, so they are on the cusp that we are supporting them. So we're tearing our support. I mean, I, I've lived level four. It certainly requires a, a lot of district support as well as state's intervention support. Today, Dussie was down, they have a support team that works with us. But it's, it's not just about throwing money at it. It's really about what are we going to do with the staff that we have? And how do we support them to support our students in a way that they're going to be successful? I, I mean, I, I think that just adding positions for the sake of adding positions because somebody is labeled level four doesn't get to the core. And it's time, we have to get to the core and fix what's, what's causing our inability to be successful and then move ourselves up. So that's, we have to invest in, in professional development and building our capacity.
Yeah. And that goes a lot of why my level of questioning is what it is because I appreciate your approach, Maria, of student-centered. Because I think often enough, it becomes too, like you just said, you took the words right out of my mouth, throwing money at things doesn't necessarily fix it. But I appreciate as an educator, between you and I, the student-centered approach that you have, and I hope that continues to help our, our kiddos here in the city. So thank you very much. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat three, Counsel Vice President Diop.
Thank you. Good evening. I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, we, our anticipated num, enrollment number was less than what it should have been. Where, are we at our, do we believe that we're going to be at our normal enrollment level this year or above it? Because obviously, that significantly affects the budget, et cetera.
So our October, October one enrollment figure was just above where we were the year before COVID. So, and we do anticipate some, some growth. We're not, we're not sure how much, but some growth.
Yeah, that's, that's a good thing. That, that significantly helps the situation. I have a question about in terms of out-of-district. I know we have some students that are out-of-district. For some reason, Fall River, I don't want to say has never been able to step up. I don't know how to phrase it, but it just seems like we haven't been able to tackle that issue. And monetarily, I mean, that's significant, very, very significant. Have we, are we making any strides? Have we made any headway on being able to not only take care of our, our own children that have to go out of district, but maybe someday even be, be able to bring people into our district so that, you know, we can, so it'll be helpful to us as opposed to a negative?
So, so I, you know, I could say this. So years ago, we built through our American Rescue, whatever the funds were before, the SFSF, the old funds that we got back in around the 2010, 2011. We, the ARAMonies, thank you, forgot the term. We built the Stone School. So we built that program, program up with the intention of out-of-district savings in the future. And so we have seen savings in out-of-district. And I think we have fewer, you know, probably due to some fewer kids. But we've also built programming in district where some of our programs have grown, so we've been able to keep kids in district. In addition to that, we do have students that go to the Stone School that are from out of Fall River. And we actually have a balance in our revolving account right now of about $371,000, so monies that we've collected on those students. So we, we have seen the out-of-district figure come down a bit. At one point, we were just over $10 million at one point. And right now, it's at about $8 million. So we've, we have seen a decrease over the years.
Yeah. A $2 million, $2 million savings is significant. I, I appreciate that, and I give you a lot of credit for that. That's, that's important. Now, net school spending, the city's responsibility this year is the $204,753,290.
Yes.
That's our obligation this year.
That's the obligation, yes.
Okay. I mean, I see it there, I just wanted to make it a point.
Absolutely.
Basically, that's all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor in seat two, Counsel Commander.
Thank you, Madam President. Your outstanding job. Everyone I've ever talked to tells me you've done a great job and keep up the good work.
We have a great team.
It is, it is. But still, leadership is an important role of that great team. And Kevin, have you been there for a long time? That's one of the good things, is to see consistency in the financial part of the school department is good. I remember in my early years, every other year, there'd be someone else, a financial director, a different one, a different one, and the numbers were everywhere, and it was, made it challenging at times for me. Just want to touch on a couple of things. How many interpreters do we have currently in the school department? If a parent does call right now, Spanish, Portuguese, I mean, they pick up the phone, do we have a number of interpreters that they can talk to, come in? Do we have any interpreters?
We don't have specifically people that are hired to be interpreters. We have school staff who are bilingual, who will do that work. So we have, the goal is to have in every school office, someone who speaks another language. We, we also have some of our administrators, some of our principals speak multiple languages. But we don't, we haven't hired specifically interpreters.
So they would handle those calls?
Right. And hopefully, our community facilitators will be bilingual, will also be able to, to provide that service.
Right. And Mr. Pacheco, I know you mentioned the Wiley School is in the path for MSBA. Is there any other schools in the pathway, in the pipeline?
So Wiley is windows, doors, and boilers. And then there'll be an ADA side on, on the opposite end of that. And the, RPA is a window replacement.
What about any other schools in the pipeline for any other school assistance right now?
No other schools are old enough.
Okay.
So the, the closest one would be Henry Lord. They're about two years away from being eligible for anything. But Henry Lord will be done with ESR funds. So windows and boilers are already currently being done, and the HVAC system will be done.
And earlier, you spoke about the baseball fields and the softball fields and 1.8 million and 2.4 million. But it's not just baseball fields. There's a lot of construction work that needs to go on there, retaining walls, it's just...
So the Durfee property is a very difficult piece of property. And fortunately, we were able to do most of that work through the construction project. However, the construction project fell short in a few areas. One was the, the outer, you know, finish of the fieldhouse, and that was scheduled to be painted. But as we took the building apart, that outside surface was in bad shape. So maneuvering around some of the funds within the system, also with the additional funds that the school department provided, we were able to completely put a new outside skin on that building. So that's complete right now, along with the windows that were part of the project on that fieldhouse. The rest of the project, as you can see, the tiering of the tennis courts. So the eight tennis courts are on four in each tier. And that pavement plan starts tomorrow with all of that work. So there's a lot of, of work that's gone ahead. And that second field that, that's going to be up on that tiering system is the softball field, the girls' varsity field. And it'll also, that'll be a lit field. It'll also have the...
You're going to do the retaining wall as well?
There is already a retaining wall there that we started working on. So that whole process should be wrapped up by September.
Right. Because I just, I mean, it just seems like an awful lot of money just for a softball field grass, but it's, there's a lot more work to be done.
There is. And all, with the exception of a few fields, they'll all be turf.
They'll all be turf?
Artificial turf, yes.
What's the life expectancy of those, 20 years?
10 to, 10 to 12 years. If we take care of them, we can get 15.
Right. And the last comment I have is, as far as recruiting goes, are we doing anything with local universities around to have like intern programs where we can have, you know, a lot of, because there's a lot of educators graduating from Bridgewater and Salve and UMass and BCC and all the schools nearby. We have quite a few schools. And are we having any intern programs?
We do. We actually have some student teachers that are housed in our schools. We do reach out, and we did attend the recruitment fairs at Bridgewater. And so we do reach out to the schools, and we, we have from Roger Williams, some interns. So they do place within our building.
Last thing I want to just ask, some companies do this, some companies don't. But when a teacher does decide to leave, I mean, there's an interview process when they get hired. Is there an exit interview as well?
Yes. We have an exit interview that they, if they choose to, to participate in. With every person that chooses to leave, they have that option. Some do, some don't, but yes.
Because I think you, sometimes you'd be amazed at what some of the...
You learn from it.
Some of the people talk about it, simple things that, you know, no one ever really thought about addressing. And it's just one thing, I didn't know if we were doing it or not, and I just think that that's something that if we weren't doing it, we should be doing. But it's good to know that, you know, that we are trying to do it with the people who are willing to do it, which is good. With that, like I said, you're doing a great job, keep it up. Thank you very much for coming. And with that, thank you so much. With that, I yield, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further from the Counsel, Counselor in seat one, Counselor Pedine?
Thank you, Madam President. So I've, I've just got a couple of quick questions, not anything, I guess, too specific with the budget. You know, just going through it, I have a lot of support in the school committee and their review of the budget. But I think a lot of my colleagues, and I know Mr. Almeida, just being on the city side at one point, can, can remember that this council chamber used to be filled, standing room only at times, advocating and, and the arguments back and forth versus funding for schools and the, and the city. So I'm glad to see that we've gotten away from that. You know, and I'm glad to see the schools are, are fully funded. I remember my times on the school committee, you know, having to deal with the budget, sending out, you know, pink slips just to make sure that we're covering all the requirements for collective bargain agreements in case we did have to make any cuts in the, in the schools. And trying to fight for, advocate for the schools and, and fighting for, with the city to try to get some additional funding. So with that being said, now that the, the schools are flush, my, my question, and I think we had a, a school committee member who came before us at the last meeting that kind of brought up the indirect cost agreements. And it's been a conversation that's been had with this, the city council. I think it was two years ago, we had asked the same question, or maybe it was three years ago, where we stood in terms of updated indirect cost agreements. So I'd like to ask that question. And the reason I ask the question is just because I, I feel like now would be the opportunity to kind of revisit what's eligible or appropriate to be charged off indirect cost agreements on, on the, on the city side. Because I, I see with the, you know, Student Opportunity Act increase, with the funding coming in, it's obviously going to have a, a significant impact on the school's local contribution. And just based on the document that you've provided to the council, the increase from FY '22 to FY '23 is, is two, just over $2 million, which is, which is pretty significant. And I know people have thrown the word flush out there. I, I would make the argument that we are not flushed. And I would also make the argument that, you know, I would say that the mayor doesn't think we're flush either. I, I think, you know, we have a balanced budget. But moving forward, it's, it's, it's a concern that I have. So with the indirect cost agreements, I think, as I mentioned before, there's an opportunity to maybe shift some, some costs over to the schools that might be able to be charged off as indirect cost agreements without being, you know, piggish about what we're looking to charge off. But while the school department has this significant resource of, of new monies coming in to try to offset some of that. So can, can you tell me where we are with the administration having conversations? Have we reviewed the indirect cost agreements? I know that was a long-winded question, but...
Our school committee and the mayor will have to take a vote on that to, to revisit and look at that and see if we, if there's any changes that need to be made. But that has to be a school committee decision with the mayor.
Have they, have, so that hasn't taken place?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Do we, do we know if there's any, I guess, appetite? Or is there any intention of, I guess, revising? And the only, and I, I just happened to, to get a copy of the indirect cost agreements. And so when I just look at, you know, section six of the indirect cost agreement, it's the discretionary programs that would be eligible for net school spending per the approval of the school committee. So, you know, two things kind of come to, to light, at least, at least one thing comes to, to mind that I'd like to see changed, potentially two things. But I just need a clarification on one of them. Part C, it says security with the exception of crossing guards. So I, I think that could be a potential where we, you know, charge the crossing guards over to the schools that would benefit the, the city. And then just in terms of the SROs, I know we talked about it, there's seven positions. Do we charge for the sergeant who oversees the SROs? Is that included in the number? Or is it just seven SROs?
Not currently. Currently, it's just the seven SROs currently.
Okay. So I, and then I guess my argument would be that I'd like to see the sergeants be charged as well, or the sergeant that's in charge of the, of the SROs. You know, that's, I'll say short money, but, you know, when you're looking at a salary that's about $100,000, that's coming over, that could kind of help. And, and these are the types of, and I, I know it's not going to amount to a whole lot, but I think when the city is, is looking to try to find some additional revenues coming in, it, it makes the most sense.
If I could just, one second on that, though, that we also, that sergeant is in charge of Diamond and Atlantis too, so we may need to have a way to offset that. We don't mind helping, but...
That's fine, that's fine. I'll, I'll call, I'll call Diamond too, you know. I was supportive of a brand new school, so, you know, the least they can do is, uh, kick over some additional monies for, um.
The, if I could just point out just a couple of things. So first of all, I, I, I don't, you know, as long as the School Committee wants, you know, wants to move in that direction, I think we are all willing to work with the administration to do what's needed. Uh, but my only concern, and I would put it all out there, is crossing the line. And what I mean is there are items that are specifically in the end of the year report that they say are not eligible for net school spending. So just kind of keeping within those parameters to try to make things work. I think there are some potential other areas we could look at, so as, you know, we could work with, with the administration to go that way.
Yeah. And listen, and, and I, I say from, from my standpoint, I think it should be reviewed at least once a year with the administration and, and, and at least both administrations, right? Because I, I think right now we're, we're in a situation where we could potentially charge off more, right? But, you know, in 10 years, we may not be in that position and we might have to kind of scale back. So I, I, I think it, you know, when we're looking to scale back and add, I, I think we need to make sure that we're, we're doing it with a, you know, a progressive lens and we're, we're looking, coming at it as a partner, right? And, and I think the schools have been phenomenal in terms of trying to fund, um, you know, some of their capital items. So I'd like to see a little bit more of that and like under item D, I know it says reno and repair less than 150,000. I'm not sure if, if that number could go up a little bit, um, in terms of renovations and repairs, because, you know, we're very, very resp- supportive of, of capital items, but I, I think what it really comes down to is, is when we start seeing these big larger pro- programs or building projects that are coming on with, with Durfee and Diamond, which we've obviously just taken on, you know, those are significant investments. So trying to figure out how we get this balance, that's, that's all. So I'd like to, and I, and I fully appreciate, and I, I know we've got to make sure that, um, everything is, is approved by, by Desi. We don't want Jay Sullivan coming down and, uh, telling us we can't do X, Y, and Z when we budgeted for something. So, but again, I just want those talks to, to take place between the administration and see what we can do to kind of, uh, move along those, um, those items. And, and, and listen, if, if the School Committee decides that they're not in agreement, then they're not in agreement, but at least we can say that the conversations were had. Then just to, I guess, piggyback on, uh, Counsel Kilby's line of question with regards to the athletic field. So when we're, when we're talking about the, the project itself, how much, cause I keep hearing that there was roughly $5 million, and I know you said 5.6 million dollars, but then we've got phase two, which is 4.6. So I'm just trying to kind of get a better understanding, um, that there was $5 million worth of work out there. We transferred 1.2 million dollars. So is that for phase one or is that phase two?
So all of, all of the transfers and the borrow, the 2.4 are all phase one?
Phase one.
Yes.
So is there any, when we start talking about phase two, is there any, I guess, um, monies available to the school system that's coming in now that you can, you can utilize or are we going to be looking to go out to, for borrowing on these items?
Um, as of right now, I would say we're looking to borrow the full phase two. Phase one is the only borrowed money there is the 2.4. But it's the phase two, we would be looking to borrow the full 4.6.
Hmm.
And again, they're listed in priority. So if it's a situation that, um, that, that number is not a number that's doable, then we would work our way to the number that's comfortable, uh, on the city side.
Okay. So the, the transfer over will cover, cover the phase one, the 5.6?
Phase one is covered, uh, we, we have a small set aside within the project that's going to be used for any alts.
Yep.
We have like the baseball field, for instance, the lights are going to go as an alt because I think we can per- our purchasing power may be better if we put it as an alt and not include it in the project.
Hmm.
A lot of times electrical items, big electrical items like stadium lighting, um, are a place to save money on our side, but jump the bid a little too high on the other side. So if we keep that as an alternate, it'll be a straight price and that'll allow us to pay it out of the current project, um, as part of the project.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I, I just, I guess, I, listen, I'm, I'm very supportive of the fields. I want to see the fields get done. I think we just need to be cognizant of the fact that we've got a debt exclusion. We just did Diamond, so we've got to be able to work within the, I guess, the funding mechanisms that we have. And I, I want to see these projects get done, cause I, I think when we start talking about, you know, um, the students, I thi- I think the athletic programs are really kind of keeping a lot of our students, uh, actively enrolled in school. Um, you know, we, we talk about attendance, things of that nature. So I, I, I think it's, it's important and quite frankly, I think when we're, when we look at these projects, you know, the community deserves it. I, I don't think they deserve any, anything less. Um, and when we start going to Talbot, I mean, we've been talking about Talbot and trying to renovate Talbot and doing something with that, uh, that land for years now. So, um, you know, but again, I just want to be cognizant of that. Uh, the other, the other, the other item I believe was, um, the resolution, and I think the intent was to, to bring the School Committee down so we could really kind of, I guess, talk a little bit about the indirect cost agreements. Was talking about the fields and then also trying to discuss whether or not it made sense to create a stabilization account, um, for the School Department that would be able to, uh, we would be able to fund specifically for capital items as opposed to constantly just going back out, uh, through debt exclusion. So, you know, I, I still, I know you sent something out saying that the mayor wasn't, um, I guess in favor of having a meeting with the School Committee? A joint meeting? Is that, was that the case?
So I spoke to the mayor about having them here and also about having them going forward when we have our, um, quarterly budget reviews. It was too late to have, to post a meeting for them to come here and we're going to continue our discussion about coming for the quarterly budget reviews.
And I, I see the mayor here, so I, I, I guess what I would say is, is I thi- I think, I think it's beneficial if we can get the elected officials together to have some of these conversations, just so that we're not having a lot of these back and forth, uh, conversations with, you know, individual conversations, you know, it, it just, I don't think they're always productive when we're really trying to move, um, the city and the district forward. So I personally like to make sure that we keep that on.
I agree with you.
On the meeting or on the docket, something to create, whether it's at the next quarterly meeting, whatever the case may be, but I think some conversations need to be had in terms of long-term planning. You know, I know we have these, uh, discussions in April, May, whatever, whatever time period, uh, you know, we have the joint meetings, but I, I think to me those, those are too late, right? I think some of these, some of these conversations need to take place in September, you know, October and November timeframe, when we're leading up to building budgets for the next fiscal year to really kind of, uh, strategize on what we want to see, um, you know, as, as a group, so I just.
I did ask for it to be quarterly.
Okay.
So we'll continue that conversation and I'll keep the Council.
Could I just comment on the stabilization piece?
Hmm.
So I'm all for creating a stabilization fund.
Yep.
But my concern is until we get to 101 or 102% of net school spending, then there really is no, not to say there's no point, cause there's always, it's always a good idea to have a savings account, quote unquote, savings account. The problem is, is I'm in a situation where I have to spend every last dollar every single year. So to be able to put it aside, I can't.
Yeah, so I, I don't, I don't know if I was saying specifically for just the schools. I, I think it's a combination of the city and the schools. Um, listen, I, we need to get to 100% of net school spending, right? I think we got to be consistent about that. I think we need to do a better job of identifying where we're going to be so that we're not, you know, giving you a million dollars at the end of the last quarter and telling you, here you go, try to, try to spend on eligible net school spending. You know, so I don't disagree with you. I, I think it's just, but the conversations need to take place in terms of what we want to see, especially when we're talking about capital improvement. You know, you, you folks have done a phenomenal job internally of really addressing the capital needs and, and trying to fund, um, you know, some of your, your programs internally, you know, and just really going through the, the process and, and working with Ken Pacheco and, and identifying what the, the needs are in the repairs. And, and we often talk about this, all the buildings have gone online at the same time. All the warranties have expired, we're going to have all the HVACs coming, uh, expiring, you know, handlers, units, whatever the case may be, we're going to have long lead times, we're going to be closing schools because there's no heat or, or whatever the case may be. So we have a number, number of schools that are going to be, uh, we're going to be dealing with that. So I think we just need to start having these conversations and, um, and it just goes back to what I, what I said in terms of borrowing. How, how are we going to address the, the funding mechanism, uh, for these capital items, both on the city and the, and the school side? And then the, the other, uh, question I had that was, uh, truly budget-specific and I don't, I don't know if it's necessarily directed for you folks, but maybe you can answer it, uh, or it's the city and if that's the city, then I'll ask the city to come down. Uh, just looking on the city budget, not the, the budget that you presented on page 243 for colleagues that want to follow along under the education tab. I was just looking at the transportation, so transportation cost is $11 million. Um, we have McKinney-Vento reimbursement, uh, coming in for FY '23 reimbursement of, projected at 930,000. FY '22 was 270,000. I would assume that the projection for the 930 is, is based on actuals. We just, in our city budget, we don't have any actuals through, uh, typically we have it through March 31st, so we don't have any numbers there. Where were we with the McKinney-Vento reimbursement? Was it the 270? Was it closer to the 900,000?
So we haven't received the monies yet for this year?
Hmm.
Uh, the monies typically come in in June. At that time we'll know, you know, as of right now, I don't even know what, you know, what they're set to give us.
Okay.
But, um, there is some money that are, that's in the account as of right now, I know that.
Do you know?
Exactly, I'm not sure. A couple hundred thousand dollars or so at this time, I believe.
So how, how do we, how do we come up with the 930, I guess, for the reimbursement?
I, I believe the reimbursement rate's going to be higher than normal for this year, so that's why we're using that, the higher number.
All right.
It's close, I, I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be close to fully funded for this year.
Okay. And I guess, I guess my question, if, if you, if you wouldn't mind, um, sharing that number, I'm just curious to see if it was higher, obviously.
As soon as we find out, as soon as, so the problem is, is they do their calculation on they, their, so what ends up happening? The process is you submit the end of the year report.
Yep.
On the end of the year report, you, you report X. I've had years where we've received 30%. I've had years where we received 50%. Last year we received, uh, significantly higher, higher than previous years. And I believe we're going to get even more this year. But, um, as soon as we get it, I'll, I can report it out through the superintendent and to the mayor.
So how do we, how do we handle that? So if it comes in higher, um, so obviously the transportation cost is, is reduced, that's on the, so does the city get the money?
Yes.
So the city?
So the, the money sits in a special revenue account that's housed for the city.
All right. Perfect. Okay, so I'll, I'll just ask for a report on, on that.
Sure.
So, Madam President, can we just get a, a report or can you just request a, a report from the administration on the McKinney-Vento, um, special revenue account?
Adam, please.
For the prior years?
Please.
If we can get maybe the last three years? And then, um, my final question was, or maybe two questions, but, um, when I was on the School Committee, I knew we, we had some, some issues with the nutrition account. So it's a, it's obviously a revolving account, it's supposed to be self-sufficient. So we were kind of going back and forth, trying to work it, to make it, make it self-sufficient. Where are we with that, um?
As, as, as of right now, we're still, we're still funding it the way we have been for the last several years. Uh, I know there's been some discussion about bringing all the benefits and stuff into the account.
Okay.
And if it's the will of the committee, beginning July 1st, we, we will do that going forward.
So all the benefits are on, still in the operating?
They, currently they're still in the operating, yes.
Okay. Okay. And then in terms of surplus for FY '22, do you have a, a rough estimate on how much you're going to carry over for prepaid or anything like that?
So the, the plan at the current time is the 1.5 million for prepaid and that's about it.
That's about it.
Yeah.
Okay. With that, Ayel.
Thank you. Anything further from the Council? Counsel on seat three, Counsel Vice President, Dion?
Yeah, I, I honestly don't know, um, if it should be the administration I'm asking this question to, but again, on page 243 in, in the budget book, total operating expenses, uh, for, for the, for public schools is 140 million, 487, 792. I'd like to know what that number represents, where net school spending is at 240 million. And there's in, and there's indirect funding, 1,370,000, which is a deduction, and I'd like to know what that number represents.
So there's money that sits outside of our budget that's housed on the city side. So examples of that are the, the Fall River retirement contribution, that money sits outside of our budget. In addition, uh, there's the money for health insurance that sits outside of our budget. Something that's just a paper cost is the administrative cost that gets reported on the end of the year report. That number is usually about 1.3 million dollars every year. So all those, and there's, you know, the charter schools, which is, were kind of a pass-through, that, that's also reported on the city side. So all those things, when you add them all up together, that's how you come up to the 205 million dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
With that, Ayel. Thank you. Counsel on seat eight, Counsel Poso.
Talking about sports fields, the, uh, the field at Fonsaka, is it used?
Yes.
What, what, what program runs there now?
Well, the kids use it for, they use it for recess over there and then there's a baseball, is it?
So I think Maplewood may use that field. The field was always assumed, for my 10 years as DPW Director, um, that it was, because we took care of it, the Park Department took care of it, um, but it wasn't. It was part of the, uh, the footprint for the Fonsaka, the small school at the time. So now we take care of that field, um, and, um, we've kind of got an unwritten policy that we have no issues with people using the fields. The only thing we expect is if they want to continually use it, they need to put porta-johns so that we have facilities for the kids and for the adults, uh, and that they pick up after themselves, um, on the field. It's, it's not a rental situation that we're looking, especially that particular field, we just want it played. We do all the maintenance on the field though.
Okay. Yeah, cause I was just thinking about if that field is being used, but you were just saying that DPW at one point took care of it.
They did.
How does that agreement between the Parks Department and the School Department work?
So it does, it didn't, it, they were under the assumption that it belonged to them as, as I did when I was on the, in the director and overseeing parks, that that field belonged to the city and we took care of it. Somewhere in the last two to three years, with everything going on in the Park Department on the city side, the, that particularly piece, that piece came up, that it was part of the Fonsaka school. So that we, now we do take care of it. So now that the, the, uh, School Department cuts that grass, maintains that field.
So correct me if I'm wrong, when it, when if an organization uses like Durfee's Field House, for example.
Yes.
There's a cost.
Yes.
Is the same apply for a field like this?
So it's, again, we have a, a full, um, matrix.
Yep.
A fee schedule for all of the, uh, facilities that we do have. The Durfee fields are a different animal, so to speak, because of the amount of investment that's involved. So a turf field is going to carry a minimum rental fee per hour. The interior carries a minimum fee and an hourly rate, depending on what you're using it within the buildings, and that goes for all the schools. Auditoriums at, uh, Morton, um, and, uh, CAS are very well-used by the community for a lot of events, uh, private and public. And then, um, just other facilities, uh, certain rooms, most of our community rooms are open to all of the neighborhoods groups, there's no fees for that. Most, uh, events that happen, if they happen within the timeframe of my coverage for custodial and security, we don't have a fee. We have a, just a one-time, I'm going to call it a $45 fee to use it, but it's not a continuous fee. So we try and get people into the buildings who want to use the buildings and we have a lot of longstanding renters, um, that you do use the buildings.
Okay. And just one follow-up to Counsel Kadim's, uh, conversation about the indirect cost agreement. When was the last time that was reviewed or changed?